What's up everybody, this is Donald Lawrence. You ain't seen nothing yet. The best is yet to come. Keep it locked right here at Harvest Radio, ten seventy AM, WKMB. It's time now for the Town Talker with Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson. Reverend Jackson is founding pastor of the Church of What's Happening Now, located in Plainfield, New Jersey. And now, the Town Talker, Reverend Zachariah Jackson.
Always good coming to you, this is the American Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson from the Church of What's Happening Now. Let me do this again. Always good coming to you, this is the American Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson from the Church of What's Happening Now, Town Talker Talk Show. We have a whole lot to talk about, you know, just a few minutes in which to talk about. Half an hour, they wish we had an hour. Maybe no, at a later date we can get an hour. Today, um, we, we're gonna, we have the school, uh, aboard people that's, that's running for office and I'm gonna say a few things and we're gonna go to Chairman Hatcher of P O P in Plainfield. He's gonna mention, talk about the murder that took place just down the street, uh, Central and Seventh Street, uh, the other night. Uh, allegedly a young lady stabbed someone. You know, um, just a few weeks ago, you know, uh, the twenty-fifth, uh, there was racist, uh, comments, uh, hurled at, um, uh, John Lewis, you know, old time civil rights member, uh, I, when I look back, I only think of my mother and father, God bless their soul, because they knew of him and everything, and Dr. King and everything, as they were walking into the house, you know, uh, trying to get this healthcare thing, uh, of, uh, passed, you know, so people still using racist comments, you know, to, as a nuclear missile told you to shut you down and everything, but it's all good that he continued to, to, uh, go on. But you know, it's a shame that in the twenty-first century that we're still facing this right here. But on the flip side of that right there, you know, when you, you look at that, 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 uh, form of, uh, of, of bigotry and then you, um, go here to Trenton, New Jersey, where a young lady, fifteen years old, sold her little sister, her little stepsister, into, uh, sexual rape, uh, slavery. You understand me? One week, a week and a half later, you know, to be here. So we, we championing for this, but then, you know, I mean, times can't be that hard, you know, then. They say, of course, that she sold herself too in prostitution, then she sold a seven-year-old daughter, uh, her seven-year-old, uh, sister, stepsister into prostitution and, uh, the, uh, parents was looking for them, so they had called the police and then before you know it, um, uh, 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 someone brought the young lady home, then another girl came home and they found out what happened and taken her to hospital, but it's a shame on both sides. It's a shame that, uh, the fifteen-year-old girl sold her stepsister into sexual slave. But then also it's a shame that there was a party to buy her.
You're right.
You understand what I mean? You see what, you understand what I'm saying, I understand my point? You got grown men and, and, and young men that's willing to buy a seven-year-old girl.
Right, that's it.
You understand me, you know? I mean, there's something wrong with that right there, you know? See, we all point. You know, if I were, we were, if this was a missile, we're trying to get to the next planet, I guess we would just take that missile, we'd just go off and come right back down, not, not daylight out of us, 'cause we just off point, you understand what I mean? We just don't know what to do. You know, I mean, just, uh, a week ago, they were calling you all kinds of names as you're trying to walk into the house. Now, you know, you're trying to walk into the Capitol too. Now, I may be named many places, but I don't know that the Reverend could hold his Christian too good as I'm walking into the Capitol and you calling me all them kind of names, I don't know. You understand me, but then forgive me, because I have been very influenced by the Old Testament, so I'm just coming into the new and learning my way of forgiveness and things of that nature. I'm trying, you understand my point? Oh, I'm trying, you understand me, but sometimes we revert back to the, oh my! You're gonna say, ah, what? For I, you know, you know? So, you know, it, it's just a shame that, that we act this way and the whole world see it today. You know, when you do something today, the whole world, the whole world, the whole world know that you down in Trenton are selling your stepsister into slavery. And then the whole world also know, not just the Reverend Zachariah from Church of What's Happening Now, Town Talker Talk Show, the whole world know that there was a market.
Yes.
There was a market, you understand me? Grown men, you got a market for a little baby.
Seven-year-old child.
You got a market for a baby.
That's sick.
You're sick.
Yep.
You understand? See, we got, we on both, we, we, you know, we, we right, we walking a tightrope. I, I, remind me when I was a, a young lad, I first coming off, I had a, a friend from the Carolinas and, um, he was a good friend of mine, but I sometimes wonder was he conspiring against the Reverend? Because kids would go to fight me, right, arguing, get ready to fight me, and he would jump and hold me and say, "Don't fight," and it would be daylight time, man. So what I started doing was, I started beating him up first, then going to them. You know, he said, "Well, why you beat me up?" I said, "Well, 'cause you gonna grab me." "I won't grab you, boy," and then leave it alone. Leave it alone. We got to fight on both sides, you understand me? It's alright, it's alright when you know it. See, we, we are, you know, we coming up from the sixties now, we starting to understand who the enemy really is.
Right, right.
Oh yeah! We starting to understand that that enemy sometime is you. So you the enemy, you the one tearing up the community, you the one doing this, you the one throwing garbage all over the place and everything and don't wanna behave yourself. Hmm? It's you, it's you, it's you. That's why we gotta hire a PMA, uh, 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 garbage worker for every, almost every citizen, 'cause it's you that don't wanna pick up the, the garbage in the street. You, you, you!
Right.
That's what it is.
That's, yep.
Oh yeah! How long you think we gonna be asleep?
I don't know.
Hmm?
It's time to wake up.
It's time to wake up. Alright, let's go to Chairman Hatcher of P O P in, uh, Plainfield Branch.
Alright, well, I've come to you today because I know that, because of the violence that has been going on here in Plainfield, the shootings, uh, the murders that had happened, uh, just last Sunday, Sunday night. Uh, the Plainfield Branch of the People's Organization for Progress is going to have a demonstration on the corner of Central and West Seventh Street on April the tenth, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. We're gonna have a demonstration out there saying, "Stop the violence, unity now." We gotta say something about the violence that continues to go on in our community. We had fought for Muhlenberg Hospital, and that was a big fight. We had a couple thousand people, it seemed like, out there. It's one thing to fight for a hospital, but I remember talking to one of the doctors about coming to join us in a rally that we're having for, uh, a young man that was just killed. And he looked at it as if it was something different to all of us, a different type of thing right here. Yeah, there, Doc, you're right, it is, I know it's, we're, we're fighting for a hospital here, but this is a human being. Also, a mother that lost her child, a father that lost his son. Now, we still need to fight for that type of thing also, but he just didn't see it in the same type of light. And I guess that's how it is today. Human life seems like it's not as valuable to us as a people. I mean, you drive down the street and you see candles, uh, like on every block, and it don't seem to bother us. And that's what's a shame and a disgrace, because until we get involved in the fight for justice for our people, nobody else is gonna fight for us. So, April the tenth, at three PM, we're gonna be on the corner of Central and West Seventh Street.
At three PM, what, what day is that right there?
That's a Saturday, April the tenth.
Try my best to be there, to, to, to champion, because it, it's just a shame that, you know, we, we look at these things and as the chairman say that, you know, we ride by those candles. We've become immune to the candle.
Immune to it, right.
But you know, this way, here's a city, but this is a very small city. And it's a shame that if we don't stop this behavior. Uh, if we don't, if we don't stop this behavior. You understand me, you know? Uh, uh, come on now. We can't let, come on, we can't let, can't let this thing fall apart. And I think that, what I've learned too, in dealing with the other element of, of folks that when they see working people or people that really care stand up, then they really back down. I've seen that right there, because truthfully, they really wanna do right. Just some of, some of them just didn't know, you know, wasn't taught or, or didn't have time to learn. I'm not gonna say they wasn't taught, they just didn't pay no mind. Everybody working in the house or nobody there.
You're right.
Being raised by, you know, whoever it is on that TV system, you know what I mean? Could be the Bionic Man sometimes, you never know, you know what I mean?
Yep, exactly.
Embodies some Bionics at this point, of challenge. Okay, y'all wanna introduce your parties or start with Rashid?
Uh, good afternoon, everyone, uh, I need to add that close. You know, you was talking about Trenton and all that stuff, it sound a lot like you was talking about Plainfield.
Hmm, I hear you.
Um, well, I'm running for the Board of Education.
Okay.
And because I think there needs to be better leadership on the Plainfield Board of Education. Uh, I've been working to better Plainfield for the last thirty-eight years. Uh, approximately the last fifteen years, I've been working in education. I've been the PTO President, Vice President, I've served on the School Leadership Council, and three years as a board member. I care about Plainfield, I always have. Uh, I believe I'd be an asset to the board, and, uh, do you want me to, uh, I guess each president speak for themselves?
Well, I want you to announce your party, because you always have, have your different parties.
Uh, there's, uh, uh, Keisha Edwards.
Okay.
Who's in the room, who's a former teacher, a tenured teacher who got tired of what was going on here and went somewhere else, and now she's running for the board, she has three kids in the school system.
Yeah, but what is the name of your party at this point?
Oh, Keisha Edwards.
That's the name of your party? The party, your party!
Do we have a name?
Leadership Advocacy Movement.
Okay.
Okay, come on, come on, let's, let's.
Yes, the name of our party is the School Leadership Advocacy Movement. Um, it's, we actually have a website, www.electagrandslam.com.
Alright, Elect Grand Slam! I remember the Grand Slam years ago, you know? The Grand Slam, okay, go ahead, Brother Tucker.
Good afternoon. My name is Clayton L. Tucker Senior, and I'm also running for the unexpired one-year position on the Plainfield Board of Education, along with my running mates, Danny Fletcher, Jaclyn Callens, and Mahogany Hendricks. Uh, we, uh, the name of our party is Save Our School, no, Change Our Schools, Change Our City.
Alright.
And we also have a website, www.changedourschoolschangeourcity.com.
Okay, alright. Do you wanna say something, Rashid, at this moment?
Um, well, I, I, I certainly I'd like to talk about, uh, some of the problems.
Let's talk.
Well, one of the biggest problems is that the present board has, uh, uh, at least the majority of the members, has a tendency to, uh, rubber stamp the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay.
Um, they, they, oftentimes they allow him to do things, to fight fights that shouldn't be fought. And I think they should, he, he, he might not really know, but they should know because they're from this community.
Sure.
And they should restrain him, that's part of, uh, uh, holding him accountable.
Hmm.
Um, a- a- again, I think, uh, there's also poor leadership on the part of the superintendent, and his poor leadership has led to, uh, low morale. Uh, there's not, there's no real collaboration, test scores are inadequate. Uh, it's confusing organizational chart. There's, uh, unnecessary, well, again, fighting the superintendent with the community teachers. And, uh, sometimes he doesn't post jobs when it's brought to his attention.
Okay.
He just say, "Well, so what?"
Well, well, let me ask you this right here, it's so different, because you know, um, years ago, when I had you on in, uh, uh, two thousand five, two thousand six, and then of course after you guys, I had, um, Paula Howard, uh, which was the superintendent of Plainfield. Why do you think that this superintendent seemed to get more of a ride than the other ones? Or do you feel that?
Well, personally, I felt that, uh, Dr. Howard got a ride.
Okay.
And, uh...
But, uh, Dr. Howard is not here anymore, that's what's happening.
Um, I actually think one of the reasons why the superintendent got a ride for as long as he did, he came in during, um, the election of Obama. So, during that time, we were excited, our first African-American president. Um, at the same time, we needed a new superintendent, we have this articulate, very well-dressed African-American male. Um, and as a matter of fact, if some of you all remember, when he came in, he used a lot of the same slogans as Obama did, "Yes, we can, yes, we will."
Yeah, but those are just slogans, I mean, you know what I mean? I, like, the Reverend Zach can use those, "Yes, we can and yes, we will," but were you electing in the office?
Right, but with that, I think everyone just kind of got so caught up in that hype and being so excited that they were willing to just go along with everything that he, he presented. And as a matter of fact, what's interesting, I'm not sure if your audience knows, but the OFAC report came out today.
And what is the OFAC report?
The OFAC report is the, um, the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance, and basically what happened was, um, people complained and complained and complained, um, to the State Department, Department of Education, about the fact that they felt that people were hired who did not have the proper qualifications, as well as some other things, um, hostile work.
Well, shame, shame, shame on you said that, though.
Right, but what happened was shame, shame on you.
Yeah.
Basically, the superintendent denied everything. He said that there was no cronyism, he didn't know about anything to that extent. But actually, what this OFAC report basically says is, um, he was the only one who quote-unquote interviewed the girls via telephone. No one else was involved in that procedure, he was the only one who signed off, and it's amazing. I know, I have a master's degree.
Sure.
On my resume, I know exactly before I hand it in to anyone what my resume says. It's amazing how someone who doesn't have a master's degree has a resume that states she has a master's degree.
And she don't have one.
And she doesn't have one, but yet it's the superintendent's job to make sure, he's supposed to verify all of these credentials.
Well, if she don't have a master's degree, uh, this, uh, particular person, uh, can the, uh, superintendent just say, override it and say, "I want you on my team"? You have to have a master's. Okay, I want you to go, go ahead and do that.
I have a, I have a human, oh, I have, my name is Mahogany Hendricks, and I am actually a human resource specialist by trade.
Okay.
Nowhere in this country are you gonna go and get a job without presenting a resume. Nowhere in this country are you gonna go and not have your credentials verified. Um, I remember when I worked at Bellcore years ago, people have falsified resumes, and there was a stand taken for everything to be reviewed, um, transcripts had to be reviewed. A lot of times now, when you go for job interviews, they will ask for your transcripts or at least the documentation. Um, there's been several times where I had to literally bring my bachelor's degree in and my transcripts from my MBA program, showing that this is what I'm currently doing.
Sure.
Um, this is how many credits I've accumulated in this program, these are the classes I have taken, and this is the degree that I hold. Um, how, um, it was okay for, uh, the board to approve without reviewing the resume and getting, uh, the answer that, "Oh, this is day-to-day." I have no idea how the vote went through with five to whatever the vote was, 'cause I know some people did not vote, yes.
So would I be balanced to say that both, you, both different parties here, uh, you guys seem to be in agreement on this?
Yeah, we're, we're actually in agreement on a lot of things, it's just that there's so many people running and everyone can't be a team.
Okay, 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 then let's go to Will McCamber.
Alright. Good afternoon, thank you for having us at Harvest Radio. Uh, I am running, I am an incumbent, and I'm running for reelection, I'm running on my record. I stand on the record that I have demonstrated over the past six years that I've been on the board. I have truly been an advocate for what is educationally sound and what will benefit children. And I had the opportunity to participate in a forum yesterday, which I found to be quite interesting and enlightening.
Sure.
You know, you work as a board member in one capacity and other people interpret that work in a different way. And I was really, uh, perplexed by some of the comments that, uh, my opponents were lodging in that I was, uh, an example of someone who was negative, that is so unlike me.
Now, why would they say that about you?
I guess you would have to ask my opponent, um, Ms. Fletcher was at the debate.
Okay, let's go to Ms. Fletcher then. Ms. Fletcher, why do you think that, uh, Will McCamber is negative?
Well, I actually find that really interesting, because, uh, the, the comment was not that Ms. Campbell was negative. In fact, uh, I didn't bring up any specific board members, the comment was about how collaboration works and, uh...
Sure.
And the idea that I was trying to get across was that, uh, we all have to consider any ideas that come to the table, no matter who they come from.
Sure.
And, uh, I, I really...
I've actually interpreted from what you said in terms of the no's, the no votes that are, that are given.
I'm sorry, Willma, it was the ego involved.
Yeah, no, the no vote represents more ego than anything else, and if it...
The no vote represent more ego?
More ego.
Now, what no vote are you talking about?
My no vote, she, there are only two people on the board.
Okay.
Who, um, have...
Don't rubber stamp.
Have gained a reputation for reading, reviewing, and making sure that whatever we vote on is educationally sound.
Okay.
So the end result is sometimes that it's a no vote.
Okay.
For instance, on this budget, this last budget presentation that was made, it was, as I would see it, a very skeleton representation of how the budget was going to operate next year. I voted no. So as I listened yesterday to my opponent saying that, you know, it's a lot of ego in that, I, I was perplexed, because my no in voting on the budget had more to do with not having any concrete information that would demonstrate that this budget was educationally sound for the children of Plainfield.
I'd actually like to discuss another no vote from Willma, um, and that no vote was to the changing of the titles, actually changing of the jobs of the two ladies that are involved in this OFAC report. Um, as a matter of fact, if some people don't know, they were quote-unquote, we can look at it as fi- not even really fired, let go from one position and immediately rehired in another position. Um, Ms. Campbell, as well as Ms. Logan Leach, voted no for that rehiring in a new position. I don't think that was ego at all. I think that was a great decision, I'm not finished, can you hold on, one second please? And as a matter of fact, what this, this thirteen-page OFAC report basically states is that yes, Ms. Campbell, as well as Ms. Logan Leach, were very correct in their no vote, because it was basically stated to the superintendent that these, uh, positions were not approved. He should not have gone forth with it, and because of people like Ms. Campbell and Ms. Logan Leach, who also brought attention to this, so that we do, our community, know about it, through shame on you, which is not negative, making sure our community knows what's going on in their school system is positive. Unfortunately, there's some negativity going on, but in order for us to fix the problem, we have to be aware of the problem. So the OFAC report basically says, "Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for your no vote."
And those are votes that we appreciate, but there have been times when people voted no on things that you, Ms. Campbell, have brought up, that were good ideas, that I felt, for instance, uh...
Speak to them specifically.
Sure, um, I recall an instance of you requesting that, uh, your group go into executive session to discuss the merits of the current superintendent, and I believe that the remainder of those present voted no.
You would be slightly correct, um, the, the spirit of the motion that I put on the table had to do with discussing the future employment, okay?
My apologies, yes.
It was not to discuss specifically, but just to discuss issues that were surrounding that, okay? Those issues were related to this very subject we're talking about.
And we applaud that, I, I'm concerned that if, if any mention is made that, um, that a no vote might be because of things other than the decisions that need to be made, um, and your opinion is that that attacked a specific vote, which it did not. That, that that is concerning, that we need to not jump to those conclusions. We were talking about what collaboration is in a very generic way, and...
And I was able to delineate exactly what collaboration was and what my efforts have been, such as promoting the spelling bee, such as initiating the, uh, role model Black History Month Lent Luncheon, as well as the Welcome Back to School, uh, gathering, which was, you know, those are just a couple of examples of recent things that I've done. What you would probably not understand as not being a board member is that executive session material is just that, to be discussed there privately, not to be discussed in public. We can't discuss anything about what happens in executive session, in public session. But the need for, the very need for us to have a discussion about the key person who we have oversight for in the district, is that's within our purview. Now, there were two members of the board who supported the idea of having that discussion in the wake of all of this controversy.
That's right.
Not to disregard anything, but to focus on what the issues were at that particular time. That was a key discussion that needed to be teed up.
I totally agree.
Before we go any further, I must, I have to say this, because we are all on teams. For one, I ran last year with Lisa Logan Leach, okay? I have a lot of respect for what she's done, I believe in a lot of her votes, as well as Ms. Campbell. I've known Ms. Campbell since I was a little girl, so I have a lot of respect for Ms. Campbell. She knows my family very, very well.
She don't look like she knew you that long.
There you go.
Look like a little girl herself.
Well, I look about ten, so...
There we go, I was gonna give you one too.
Okay, and, um, what I have to say is this, I came here today to voice why I'm running for the school board. Okay, I know what happened yesterday has to come out, but I think if Ms. Fletcher and Ms. Campbell wanna have a debate together, you should bring them back at another date, because of...
Well, do you think the fifteenth would be a good date for, for Ms. Fletcher and, uh, Ms. Campbell? In terms of a debate right here on Harvest Radio?
If you wanna have your own debate, that's up to you.
I see that right there, because, I, I, I see that.
But let me just, let me just say this, I think that this is good discussion.
It is, it is.
Okay, we've gone through, and I know you missed the first, uh, NAACP forum, but we've been through a few forums where we've had the opportunity to have Q and A.
Sure.
We really haven't had the opportunity to debate as candidates and to talk about our different points of view.
So, uh, uh, we, we, four minutes, uh, uh, remaining in the show, uh, would you be ready? I mean, are you guys up to do that right there? Would you like to?
Yeah, I can commit that.
You can, you can, you can, alright. Because the fifteenth is another show, that's what I'm saying.
But I wanna make sure everyone is aware, you know, as far as the, bringing it back to executive session, um, in the superintendent's contract, he cannot be discussed unless given a certain amount of notice. So, they could not, could not have spoken on his, his, basically his vali- not, not even his valuation, asked any questions or raised him without. And as a matter of fact, oh, I'm sorry, this is Keisha Edwards. And, you know, thank goodness for Willma and Lisa asking for him to be raised, because let's think about it. Had more people on that board agreed to do so, we might not be right here with this OFAC report.
Exactly.
So there was a purpose behind it, these no's have nothing to do with ego.
But it sounds like you're agreeing with me.
No, I'm actually not, because you're saying they should not have gone into executive session, and they should have asked for his contract.
I'm sorry, that's not at all what I'm saying.
Yes, hi, my name is Jaclyn Callens, and I'm also a candidate for the, um, Board of Ed. Um, I think that we all know that we wanna agree on everything, but we should all, we, we always should respect one another and one another's opinion.
That's right.
Um, as adults, that's what we should. There's a lot of things that's going on that none of us agree with, with the school board and with the, the administration, uh, that's, that's citywide. But you know what is happening? We need to figure out, we see what's going on, we see the problem, we need to concentrate on the solution to the problem, to fix what's broke, but we need to know that if we get on the board, if one person get on the board from one team, one person from another team get on the board, we're still gonna have to work together.
Sure.
So, we have to come together, a lot of things that were done, they seem to, when you put out things, they seem to just focus on the negative, but I think that if the city, the newspaper and everything put just a little bit of the positive things that go on with the schools.
Sure.
And in the city, then it will make the city and it will bring people here, and it will help everyone to work together.
We're two minutes left, you know, you, you, to me, it seem like you all are saying the same thing. I don't know, just two different parties, I could be off point.
Sure.
Okay, so anyone wanna say something, like one more minute? Tucker, you wanna say something, someone wanna say something?
Okay, in closing, um, I'd like to, I'm glad we were all able to come here and sit around this table here and at least get this much out in the open.
Sure.
And I really hope that, um, we can finish this off these next couple of weeks, you know, nice and clean, and just finish po- positively, okay?
Alright, and, and let me say this right here, that, uh, Church of What's Happening Now, Town Talker Talk Show, we invited everyone, not all the parties showed up. Uh, I think we got like one more minute ago, is that it, Bob, or we, we had? Okay, we're gonna wrap it up.
Arm, arm and now.
So we're gonna wrap it up?
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack!
Obama!
Barack! Keep over live.
Barack!
No, it's only gonna happen thirty minutes.
Now, he said he was gonna...
Oh, you were gonna extend it?
Yeah.